Damn. And we are off. How's it going, everyone? Of course, I had to send a tweet, which is now going to mess up the TikTok feed, but what are you gonna do? It's been a while. I've missed you all. And I figured we have, I don't know, maybe a month, twenty-six days, I think, to be exact, until the special, not the special election. My god, am I out of it? The Boston preliminary election. So if you have questions, drop them in the chat. As always, to my TikTok people, hello. I love you. However, I would recommend switching over to Twitch and watching me there. But nevertheless, I'm one hundred percent going to do another show, another live show between now and September fourteenth. How's it going, Professor X? And so I will give my official predictions then in terms of what do I think is gonna happen on the fourteenth. Right now, be just giving kind of my general synopsis of where the race is at. Not much has changed for whatever reason. Thank you again. There definitely has been a little bit of momentum from Michelle Wu, I feel, over the last week or so, after Kim Janey absolutely has been picking up steam for the past two months, which is what I and basically everyone who follows this stuff closely has been saying was gonna happen. And this is still, you know, gun to my head, who do I think has the best odds of getting out of the prelims? In reverse order, John Barros, which I guess some media outlet is having a mayoral forum and they declined to invite him, I think. It's either that or they're doing a host of series and they didn't invite him to that. So I'll just say, I started giving Barros a lot of crap mostly because of the op-ed that he did against rent control. But you know what? He made another statement supporting eminent domain. So he's back on my good side. And even if he never wrote that eminent domain article, I still think he should be up there as one of the five candidates. Though again, I don't really think he's said much interesting where it comes to policy or added to the debate in any way, but if you're a media outlet, I would certainly have him on. But anyway, he is still in fifth place, lowest in fundraising, lowest by just about every metric we have, lowest in polls. Uh, fourth place, odds to get out, I still have to give that to Andrea Campbell. Now, it is possible that they use their one million plus very strategically. They have a hell of a get out the vote campaign. But the way the race is consolidating now, and I've said it before, and I'll say it again, Kim Janey, the moment she declared, took over Andrea's lane to victory. Andrea was basically boxed in. I think she made some missteps in the policy side of things. I think she tried to stay in the middle between Michelle and Kim. And I think that ultimately just made it so some people who wanted to support the first black mayor in Boston's history, somebody who's been from here, they consolidated around Kim Janey, people who wanted to support, who has been the most progressive voice in the race for the past, I don't know how long people have declared, six months now, continue to support Michelle Wu. And Andrea Campbell has absolutely picked up some endorsements, but really just nothing from the institutions. And so I still put her as fourth place odds. Nisa Savi George hasn't really picked up steam, but I mean, you never know. Her voting block will absolutely be the older and whiter parts of Boston. And in a city which is minority majority, that sounds like a detriment. However, something about old white people is they vote. They come out for special elections, they come out for preliminaries. And so she definitely, out of her base, is gonna have the easiest time getting them out, but are there enough? That's the question. Second place in terms of odds to get out, Michelle Wu. And finally, Kim Janey. And what we've seen this week is an absolute rumble between the Boston City Council and Kim Janey in ways that are a little surprising. And I was gonna play some of the clips and I just didn't have time to go through the hours of the Boston City Council meeting from Wednesday. But some of the highlights, we saw Matt O'Malley calling out Kim Janey for not issuing any vaccine mandates. We saw Kenzie Bach saying she's being anti-democratic for withholding documents that have been, again, matter of public record. Uh, Lydia Edwards followed up with the subpoena word, which is very, you know, those are fighting words on, uh, Capitol Hill. And I, maybe I think this was boiling over from an article earlier in the week of the Boston Globe pointing to how Kim Janey's administration has been protecting the campaign, how they have been alerting whenever the press is making inquiries to make sure Kim can clean things up on their end. This was talking about the failure of disclosing apartments or rental units that Michelle Wu, Barros, and then Nisa Ralat dinged for. Kim Janey was in absolutely the same boat. And so this building tension, and I think what finally caused everyone to say, F this. Oh, and actually, even before that, part of the building, you had to go all the way back maybe six months ago at this point, when Ricardo Arroyo put forward the canceling of the special election as dictated by the city charter. And again, I was and still am in supportive of that move. I think that was the right call. I lean on the side of democracy, a lot of other people also who share my lens, supported that call, but it is somewhat of an open secret that that was very much a political maneuver by Ricardo Arroyo. It was very much intentional to delay what was the charter mandated election schedule to give Kim Janey more time to continue her fundraising, continuing to build name recognition. And so that I know irked some people in the Boston City Council. We then had that budget vote. I'll continue to highlight Ricardo Arroyo because he had the biggest transition. Very passive, voted in support of it because he didn't wanna hurt Kim Janey. And just, I think that compared with the other recent developments that I was illustrating, kind of boiled up. And then this whole early voting shenanigans, I think pushed the council over the edge. Where the list of early voting polls was announced. And suspiciously, Michelle Wu's neighborhood district was completely left off, as was Chinatown, which has the highest Asian population in the city, who, from basic demographics, might be in support of who would be the first Asian mayor in Boston's history. So very cutthroat. I mean, there's no smoking gun, but you don't gotta be a genius genius to put those two together. And it led to an airing of grievances, we'll call it, on behalf of the Boston City Council. Now, what I have for today, and the reason I definitely wanted to do the stream, was wanted to say hello to everyone. And I guess I'll make the pitch now. So if you were listening to this, you more than likely either follow me on TikTok or the regular podcast. I recommend following me on Twitch ideally, because I might use that platform more isolated in the future. Facebook, YouTube, retweet, subscribe, I don't know, do all the things. I did set up Venmo in my link tree after two or three people asked if they could financially contribute in some way. So I'm accepting four dollar donations for either a beer or a cup of coffee, depending on your age, if you wanna do that, that's fine. But I'll continue to keep this product free. And we'll see whatever shape it takes as we go on this adventure together in 2022. And the audio I have is from Jim and Marjorie, who do the Boston Public Radio, a job that I absolutely love to take over, but I think my politics makes it basically impossible. And they interviewed Kim Janey, and I think she finally, maybe, I'm hoping, clarified her position on rent control. And as people who have been following this drama, Kim Janey originally was against it. Held up the red plaque when asked the question, do you support rent control? Big old no. But around the same time, is the right to the city vote endorsement? People released statements, she changed her website, looked like she was leaning towards it. Grace Holly, who, if you follow me, you probably follow her as well. She knows more about housing policy than I do, which is not a title I give to people easily. She did a fantastic thread that tried to unravel this recent drama, tried to figure out where Kim Janey actually stands on the issue. And I think she had mentioned it before I commented or after, but at that point, this is maybe a week ago, we'll call it. Grace and I were on the same opinion that what it appeared to be was that Kim Janey supports the local option, meaning allowing Boston to vote yes or no on rent control. However, she has not really come out in support of the policy itself. And I think that is the most honest read of her stance as of a week ago. But I think in this interview, she actually clarifies and might make any public declaration on it, which would be fantastic. So I can just get it out of my mind. People can stop assuming that I'm operating in good faith when I am genuinely just trying to know what does the candidate say their policy is. I'm not interested in what people say in back rooms. I, we need to hold elected officials based upon what they're willing to say in public. And so this was an interview that they did, and I started listening to it and Jim just had some fire in terms of how I was asking the questions. So I figured it might just be fun if I react to her live, so I didn't get to go ahead. And I know they also asked questions about the vaccine and all that good stuff. If you have questions, again, you can drop it in the chat. I'll keep monitoring that. If you're watching our TikTok, hello. If you wanna follow me on Twitch, it might be easier for me, but you do you. And also let me know how the audio is.
Welcome back to Boston Public Radio. Marjorie and Jim Brody, we're continuing our coverage of the Boston mayoral race with a focus on the candidates. Joining us in line talk about why she thinks she's the right one to continue leading the city's acting mayor, Kim Janey. Kim Janey, welcome back. Good to talk to you.
It's good to be here. Can you hear me okay?
We can indeed.
We had a momentary panic, but there you are. So we're all set, all set right now. So, uh, Mayor Janey, um, tell people why they should vote for you in the, uh, election in September fourteenth.
We're gonna s-
Well, as someone who is born and raised in this city-
Damn, first thing, born and raised, creating a contrast to Michelle Wu. I won't interrupt every time.
Grew up in the neighborhoods of Roxbury and the South End. I bring a life experience that is very different than all of the mayors that have come before me. As the first woman mayor, as the first black mayor, I am informed, uh, through a lens of equity, justice, and love. That is how I have been leading over the last four and a half months. What I understand is that we have an opportunity to create a better Boston, a Boston that is stronger, a Boston that's more equitable, just, and resilient. We cannot go back to the way things were. We cannot go back to a normal before COVID, uh, not recognizing the systemic inequities that COVID exposed and exacerbated. This is our chance to create a stronger Boston where we all, uh, can benefit and thrive. That is what we all want across every single neighborhood in Boston. That is the work that I have been leading over the-
So let's talk about vax mandates or lack of same, uh, for the moment. Uh, specifically in places like restaurants, gyms, theaters, that sort of thing, like New York and San Francisco have done. You first described them or likened them to birtherism and slavery. You said you regretted those analogies. Then you then said, uh, recently that you didn't want half of black people in Boston to not be able to go to grocery stores. You know, nobody is talking about grocery store mandates. Haven't you contributed to the fear and confusion that leads to vaccine hesitancy that you're so trying to combat?
Jim?
All right, so this is when I paused it and I said, I wanna react to this live, because that is a fire question. I have interviewed candidates on much further left platforms than this, and the framing of Jim's question was absolute fire. So good job, Jim. Let's see how she responds to it.
This is what I've said from the very beginning. The vaccine is our best shot at battling this pandemic. I've led by example from day one, getting the vaccine in my first few weeks in office, doing it very publicly, sending a message to communities of color and all across Boston that the vaccine is safe and effective. I've invested three million dollars in a vaccine equity grant initiative so that we could work with community groups with trusted relationships on the ground, meeting people where they are to break down barriers for communities that may have been disproportionately impacted and certainly vulnerable populations. I've launched the Hope Campaign, a multilingual public, public awareness campaign encouraging residents all across our city to get vaccinated. It is in different languages. We've done the work in churches, standing up not just the mass vaccination sites, uh, but community clinics, priority clinics, and one of the most. This is why Boston is one of the most highly vaccinated cities in the country in all of our municipal buildings. We now have, being informed by the data, leading by the data, following the science. And we're doing this in partnership. And in Boston, the good news is, people are taking heed. We've seen increases over the last few weeks, uh, with not just infections, but more important with the vaccine. People are paying attention. This Delta variant is very serious. And the best way that we fight it is with the vaccine. That is what I've done from day one.
But you know, Mayor, you cited the data. Just let me cite some back to you. On July fifteenth, Boston had a 1.8% positivity, New York the same, 1.9. New York last week, 3.7, Boston, 3.8, the exact same. They've got a mandate in these gyms and restaurants and theaters and that sort of thing. And with due respect, you didn't answer my question. Don't you think at least in that one aspect that you have contributed to some of the doubt and fear that some unvaccinated people feel in this city?
Damn, second great follow-up from Jim, tried to get it, go back to answer the direct question about her comments on vaccine mandates, and then also citing the data. And I, I, I've read an article which has an accent, I respond to it, but somebody asked me a question in the chat. Have I done any canvassing for Wu? Curious what you're hearing on the doors of so. So I have not. Right now, all of the door knocking that I do, if you follow me on social media, is in support of the twelve candidates that Boston DSA has endorsed. I am one hundred percent open to knocking, uh, knocking doors for Michelle on my home neighborhood when I have the time. I have not. It looks like from anecdotally, from people I've talked to, that the mayoral election is just one that is very polarizing. I've talked to people who, when I was with other candidates, like canvassing for them, gotten questions about my thoughts in the mayoral race. And some of them, you know, it, it's difficult because none of the candidates that I'm supporting have come out to endorse one of the candidate, one of the mayoral candidates. So you have to like separate, you know, my role as somebody who just follows this a lot with what's gonna help my candidates win. But I did get somebody who was very hostile to Michelle Wu, who aligned with her on policies, but said, I am not at all excited for Michelle's candidacy. I'm like, okay, that's why I'm here to talk to you about X. So, I mean, it, it's a mixed bag, but I have not yet, yet is the key word, knocked doors for Michelle.
No, I do not. I've led by example. I've made sure that we are prioritizing people throughout the pandemic, meeting people where they are, making sure they have the information and getting people vaccinated.
So you have no intention of, I mean-
Let me finish, let me finish. That same data, while we've seen infection rates go up, and we know that is because the Delta variant, uh, is much more infectious. This is why I've led with mask mandates, with, uh, getting city employees vaccines. And the other data point that you're not citing is hospitalizations. And while we've seen infections go up, hospitalizations, uh, have remained well over, under the threshold.
So you have no intention-
Right now, let me finish. Right now, we, there's a seven-day average of around seventy. When we opened up the city, this is COVID infections in the hospital. When we opened up the city back in May, it was much higher at a hundred and twenty-six. Back in January, it was four hundred. We're well under the threshold. We have to look at all of the metrics, not just infections, as we live with this pandemic. If we get to the point, Jim, here in Boston, because I have to do what's best for Boston residents, I will certainly do everything, using every tool in our toolbox to protect the people of Boston.
There's a great follow-up that Jim should ask. Let's see if he doesn't.
What I've been continuing to do. And so if we get to that point where I think we need to move forward uh, with something more aggressive, I will certainly do that.
Ask the question.
You know, uh, something I wanted to clarify-
Come on. Let's see if they ask it.
Vaccine mandates or vaccine passports. Um, you said that if we asked people to present vaccine-
Okay, they might ask this and they might not. I mean, one, um, Jim was trying to ask her to do, to just state directly, like some of her recent comments, don't you feel they're hurting? Because I absolutely believe they have. She refused to answer that, which is what she's supposed to do, to be honest. You deflect, you say, no, absolutely not. And then you hit the things that you've done well. That's what you're supposed to do as a politician. But, and she mentioned mask mandates, so one of the immediate follow-ups I would have asked is, well, actually, you have, you have not instituted a citywide mandate. Your mask mandate is just for the Boston Public Schools. But then she said, we have not hit the threshold, and she said that we have not gotten to the point. She used the phrase thresholds. We have not gotten to the point. She said it's gonna be science-driven. The question that I hope they asked, that should have been the immediate follow-up, was what is that threshold then? You said you're following the science. You said we have not gotten to the point yet. Okay, um, um, Mayor, what is that point? You said you're doing this data-driven, so we haven't hit the threshold. Somebody at some point said, once our infection rate is X, you need to do a vaccine mandate. Once our hospitalization rate is at X, now you need to issue a mask mandate for the city. So she used the words threshold, and once we have, get to the point, the immediate follow-up that they should have asked her is what is that metric? Because I can guarantee you, she would not have stated it on air, either because she doesn't know, or because they don't want to say it.
Vaccine passports, if they were going into a restaurant or a gym, that would shut out nearly forty percent of East Boston, sixty percent of Manhattan. I just wanna be clear. Um, does that mean you're okay with unvaccinated people from East Boston and Manhattan or anybody else going into restaurants or gyms unvaccinated? I'm not clear what that means.
Marjorie, I want everyone to get the vaccine. I want everyone to be protected from this virus. That is why we've been doing the work with vaccine clinics that meet people where they are, mobile efforts, partnering with community health centers, uh, making sure that we are in touch with our hospitals, the best in the country, that we're following the data, that we have a mask mandate in all of our municipal buildings, that we have a vaccine mandate for all city workers. I want every resident in Boston to get vaccinated in every single neighborhood. That is the work that we continue to do, uh, in the city. And should the data suggest-
Come on!
-that we have to take more aggressive measures-
Giving you the layup.
And do other things, we will certainly do that.
What data are you looking forward to make that decision? Ask the question.
Protecting the people of Boston.
We're talking to the mayor of Boston, Kim Janey, running for reelection. Uh, uh, Mayor Janey-
Oh, how do you whiff?
And housing in general.
All right, here we go. It's the rent control. Here's what we're waiting for.
I believe early in this effort, you stated your opposition. My sense is that you've softened that opposition a little bit. Can you, uh, explain to me where you are on some rent control or rent stabilization measure for, uh, uh, Boston?
You know, we, we know that Boston was facing a housing crisis long before COVID and that COVID has made things worse, worse. I come at this from a personal perspective as someone, uh, who, I grew up in subsidized housing. As a young single mom, got my first apartment using a Section Eight voucher. Was able to purchase my home through a first-time homebuyers program. Uh, as a young child, you know, spent time in a homeless shelter with my mom and little sister. My family's home in the South End, we weren't able to hold on to that because of gentrification. I understand these issues and the challenges that so many residents face because I've lived these challenges. And I know, particularly in my neighborhood, where we've seen, uh, housing costs go up by seventy percent in a five-year period, that we need to use every tool in the toolbox, which is why I think, uh, a local option is very important. We have legislation, uh, that is, uh, being supported by advocates and pushed forward by advocates uh, in, in, uh, community groups, uh, throughout Boston, and I support that local option. I support, uh, doing everything that will help us stabilize housing in our community, stabilize rents. And part of that strategy, uh, and we've gotta look at a number of things. Local options, we've gotta look at IDP. We, you know, I've invested in, uh, rental relief, fifty million dollars. That's helped now thirty-four hundred households. Uh, we've invested in our budget, uh, through AOP and, and Land Trust. Uh, just this week, yesterday, did a ribbon cutting, um, for housing that we were able to, uh, keep affordable.
I'm just gonna pause there for a second, because she's starting to get away from it. She's still citing local option, which, I mean, again, she has not said the words rent control. She keeps citing a local option, which, to me, continues to reinforce that she is not coming out publicly in support of rent control. She is coming out in support of a home rule petition, which will allow Boston to take a vote on whether to support rent control or not. And those are two very different things. And so, but then she said, right, rent stabilization. And I, I'm sorry, this is, maybe that's pedantic, but this is, you need to be specific with the policy of rent control. You know, rent control is not a specific policy, which makes this very complicated. Rent control refers to a long list of different policies that you could have. But she's not using the word, continues to say local option. I am not gonna accept a, what some people say is a synonym, as in rent stabilization. You need to be able to have politicians be incredibly clear, so therefore, when they back out of it, you can hammer them for it. Because right now, and maybe she says it later, we're gonna keep listening, even though Patriots, well, they're about to go to the second half. If she is not incredibly clear on her stance on rent control, if we get to a local option, If she is not incredibly clear on her stance on rent control, if we get to a local option, which, I'm sorry, if the mayoral, if the mayor is not going to be advocating for it strongly at the State House, it's probably not gonna happen. Because the State House doesn't want us to do this to begin with. And so, there is a big difference between being a vocal champion of the policy and being somebody who says, well, I support the work of activists to get a vote in the future. Those are very different things. But the wiggle room that is allowed when you let a politician change the phrase, and we saw this with Medicare for All on the, at the national level. Everyone saw this during the Democratic primary, with, do you support Medicare for All? Everyone raised their hand. Now, a few weeks later, oh, yeah, I support Medicare for all who want it. Yep, yep, so I, I, yep, me and Bernie saying Medicare for All, my policy is for all who want it. And then it just allows them to keep twisting it. You need to be incredibly clear and hold them to it. And I don't think I'm being hypocritical or bashing for trying to have that standard. But let's, I mean, maybe she says it, let's see.
And improve the condition, you know, and then earlier this week, did a key passing for housing that we were able to take off of the, from the private market and make affordable. We need every single tool in the toolbox, including homeownership in the city of Boston.
It would have been great if she said, including rent control.
For more residents to own their own home. And so I want to make sure we're pushing on that as well.
I'm gonna hit that for a second, too, because every single, if, if I ever ran for office, I would probably talk about homeownership, too. And when I do, you can dig up this quid and bash me for it. Because there is absolutely no solution widespread that can hit enough people involving homeownership. It cannot happen. All we can do is maybe help people who are right on the cusp- Thank you for the follow. -who are right on the cusp of homeownership to get over it. Somebody who is close to being able to afford, right now, I think it's $720,000 for a condo in Boston. Somebody who, right now, could maybe only afford $650,000. We might be able to get some of those people in that demographic a little bit closer. But you cannot solve the problem of housing in any city in the country, never mind one with 2/3 of renters, by advocating for policies around homeownership. It is a fiction. It cannot happen. And for, and every candidate does it, even socialist candidates do it. Again, you can bash me if I, I'll say it, too. But it cannot be the cornerstone. It is lying. It is giving people false hope. It is selling tickets on the last lifeboat. It is putting forward the idea of a dream that has long been dead in this country for decades. It frustrates me when I hear politicians talk about it, because I know it's just trying to give people hope, and I know a lot of people want to own their own homes. There is no long, by long, I mean on-scale policy that you can do in a city around homeownership. It cannot happen. I'm gonna resume in a second. Boston Rob asked, has she talked about education? She might later in this, if you have a specific question, I probably know what her stance is on it in terms of education, but not yet. We're gonna, we're gonna finish this segment, though.
And we'll have the opportunity to do even more with our federal resources, making sure that we are addressing our housing crisis and that we are using every single tool in the toolbox. One size, you know, doesn't fit all, that kind of approach will not work. It could only reinforce some of the inequities that we see. So we have to be very mindful about what is needed in different neighborhoods across Boston, and make sure that we are putting forth policies that will help us meet the need and keep Boston residents in their homes, making sure that we are stabilizing our communities and that every person-
I hate that word, stabilizing. I'm gonna have to hear that for years now.
Whether they're new to the city and want to put down roots, that they have the opportunity to call Boston home.
We're talking to Kim Janey.
Oh, come on, ask-
Rodri, a lot of people have done reporting on, on Massachusetts Avenue and Melania Castle.
Okay, well, we'll listen to Mass and Cast, too, because Patriots are going to halftime. Another great follow-up that they should have asked would have been, I'm sorry, I'm a little confused. Can you explain to me the difference between rent control and rent stabilization? Because that's a genuine question. I know I, my tone made it sound like I'm being a dick, but I think that's a genuine question. I asked you a question on rent control, you spoke a little bit about rent stabilization. Can you clarify for the viewers if there's any difference between those policies, or do they mean the same thing? I think it's an incredibly fair question. Another one they missed.
Or the section there, which ever since the Long Island Shelter, Boston Harbor shutdown in 2014, has really been suffering, people suffering from mental illness, drug addiction, are struggling there, and the homeowners and business owners are struggling as well because of needles and people being in distress-
I don't know, comparing-
And robberies, et cetera, et cetera.
Business owners to people living on the street facing addiction.
Mayor Walsh talked a lot about-
I don't know if suffering is the right word.
We're building this bridge to Quincy, or from there, from wherever it is, from Quincy out, the shelter is gonna take a long time. Quincy doesn't want it. Other people have talked about, you know, spreading services around the city. You have talked about, which seems to be the fastest thing, getting a ferry out there and expanding emergency services and rehabilitating Long Island Shelter to take some of the people that are at Melania Castle and Mass Ave now. So you said your administration is exploring it. What do you know about the ferry, EMT services, et cetera, at this point?
Rodri, thank you, you know, this is a very important question, and I really-
Just in case people don't know what they're talking about, so there used to be a, what I'll call a mental health facility, shelter on Long Island, not the Long Island that you're thinking of. It's a small island that is part of Boston, that before, the only way to access it was a bridge over to Quincy. The bridge was basically condemned because it was falling apart. I forget what year this was, it was early in Marty Walsh's tenure, or maybe the year right before. Quincy doesn't want it, so Quincy is refusing to build this bridge. So one idea is to repair the facility, let them be able to be stable, and then just do a ferry service out there. But sure, fine, I support that, I support getting that facility back online. It's a little icky to me, it's kind of like Shutter Island, in some way, that we're just gonna put on an island, people facing mental health, people facing addiction. But I mean, if that's where the facility is, I'll bite the bullet on it, if it gets people housing early, a housing-first model, which, my God, they should have had. I hope they ask her that question. Would you, did you support the housing-first model put forward by Victory Programs that because of community opposition and the cowardice of Boston City Councilors, Frank Baker, Ed Flynn, Michael Flaherty, got rid of? Did you support that? I don't know if they'll ask her that question. All right, let's say, I'm gonna say a little bit longer. So if you have any questions, TikTok, now's the time.
I appreciate you lifting up that people are suffering. And I think that sometimes gets lost when we are discussing this issue. People often refer to a location, calling it Methadone Mile or Mass and Cast, which I think dehumanizes the individuals who are in desperate need of support and treatment. So I like to lead with that, that we've got to recognize that this is a public health crisis, and we don't want to lose sight of the fact that people need support and services, and that much of the burden, most of it, has been placed on Boston. And so we need to see a regional approach, which is why this is now a high priority with the Metro Mayor's Coalition, because this cannot continue to fall on Boston. The governor has lit-
So this is another massive talking point that you see in every city, which is to say, oh, like, people who are homeless, people facing addiction, would you know what, they're not actually from Boston. They're not from here. So why are we taking care of these people? It is the biggest pass-the-buck, I don't want to deal with it, blame the outsiders thing, and you see this in every single city. See this during protests. But I'm sorry, the people are here, and if you think that trying to blame outside mayors or governors is going to actually solve the problem, you're out of your mind. It is nothing more than trying to blame others, to try to deny people services. They are here. So what the issue is, what do we do so that people who are on our streets need help? You have to address that directly, not try to count on other mayors and other facilities, because we have the resources here. That's why they're here. People like to live in cities. The whole census data that we just got from 2020 was people moving to cities. I think like 2/3 of counties in the country are shrinking in population size. People are moving to the cities. This is, this is your problem now, I'm sorry. Oh, God, I hate that. But it's basically saying, why do we have to deal with it? It's a complaining talking point.
...up and is making investments in, in other communities to stand up programs there-
Never gonna happen.
-that's got to be part of the strategy. It cannot continue to fall on Boston.
Never gonna happen.
And while, you know, I won't give up on a bridge, I know a bridge is long-term. That is long-term, and people need help right now. And so, looking at ferry options means the recovery campus has to be built in such a way that it can be self-sustained-
Self-sustaining.
-that the emergency response can happen right on the island. But even with that, the recovery campus still needs to be built. So this is still very, you know, much more of a long-term solution, even if we're able to get ferries off the ground, because the campus itself needs work.
All right, talk about the Victory Programs.
And so we've got to make those investments. We have an opportunity, certainly with, with more investment coming into the city. We've got an infrastructure bill that we, we can look at there. But on the ground now, we've got to make sure more is happening. I'm sure you guys have seen the reports of frustration around the task force, and we certainly, I, you know, appreciate the, the effort and the work that members have given.
Yeah, if anyone in your future ever asks you to join a political task force commission working group, I want you to ask, what powers does it have? And if all they say is you will make recommendations to me about what to do, just say, no. Say, I'm sorry, I just saw it with my time. Never sit on one of those. It is 100% a way of punting, it buys the politician a year or two, it ultimately will either be ignored if it does not give advice which helps them politically, or the decision, the members of the body will reach an already agreed-upon conclusion, which helps whoever set up the commission. So you ask what powers it has, I'll sit on a commission if you give me subpoena power. I'll sit on a commission if you give me $10 million for budgeting to actually implement the ideas. But if it's not coming with money or some sort of legal power, skip it. Maybe another minute or so.
Over the last two years, but we need to revamp that. We need to make sure that we are, are moving on the ground in a way that gets people the service and the treatment that they need, and also recognizing, you know, the frustration that, that residents feel. But I don't want that to become, you know, us versus them. You know, both things are important. Our businesses are important, our residents who are impacted by this are important, but certainly also the individuals who are dealing with substance use disorder-
Good on, good on Kim for making that point.
-and homelessness. This is why investing in housing and making sure that there is, a part of the strategy is supportive housing that can help people transition off the streets and into permanent housing. It's why the mental health pilot that I announced last week is so important, because we have to rethink and reimagine how we respond to crises. We cannot-
Um, I'm actually, I'm gonna end it there, because I have to get going. She's referring to, it's called the Kahoots System, as an adorable name, I think, out of Oregon, from the late 80s, the late 90s, which is basically like a 911 service, except if you're going through a mental health crisis, they don't send somebody with a gun, they send somebody who's trained to deal with mental health. It saves lives, it saves money, there's absolutely no downside to it. A woman was shot in Saugus the other day, who was dealing with a mental health crisis. She was shot in front of her children. So Kim Janey gets props for creating a pilot program for that, though my two qualms with it is, one, the money allocated to it was very low, it was barely over a million dollars. You're not gonna be able to run an operation with that amount of money, even just a pilot. And the second is that the funding did not come from the police, it came from the Department of Health Services. So, anyway, all right, I'm gonna leave it there. Maybe they got to ask her the question, but I've been on for about 45 minutes, and I'm a little tired. So I'm going to say goodbye to the Twitch, TikTok, Facebook, whatever.